Good evening. I'm going to call to order the April 10th meeting of the Issaquah City Council Services and Safety Committee. I am Chris Ray, the Chair. With me this evening are Council Members Baptiste and Council Member Hunt. On the agenda for this evening, we have a presentation by City Administrator Moon on broadcasting boards and commissions. No decision, this is just going to be an update. We're also going to address Agenda Bill 7484 Teen Cafe Partnership and Leasing Agreement. And we'll tackle Agenda Bill 7522, Creating a Visiting Issaquah Organization. City Administrator Moon, you're up.
Thank you very much. You have a simple memo in your packet. The council, as you know, appropriated funds in the 2018 budget to equip another room in a city facility in order to televise additional boards and commission meetings. That lump sum would allow us to broadcast anywhere between two and four additional boards and commissions. And at the time that council approved that allocation in the budget, council did not describe which boards and commissions should be televised. So I'm here tonight to make a recommendation, a place to start conversation about which boards and commissions you might like to televise. Also mentioned that I discussed with council leadership and a couple other council members which path this decision-making should go. And the feedback that I received and the direction from council leadership was ask services, and services can make the call. So I'm not anticipating unless committee feels differently from council leadership that this needs to return back to the full council and be seconded there. We'll just take your direction and go ahead and implement. We are in the process right now of equipping the Pickering Room at City Hall Northwest. That was deemed to be the really most suitable location for a variety of reasons. Be happy to talk about those if you have questions, but that is the location. And we, depending on which boards or commissions are selected, we may be able to accommodate them in the Pickering Room on the same night, day of the week, same time that their meetings are occurring now. But that will be dependent on whether or not those times conflict with other livestreamed meetings that may be taking place on that same night at that same time. So we'll avoid conflicts by taking whatever boards and commissions you pick and looking at the schedule and either moving their meeting time or day, or certainly we're anticipating moving the location of those meetings. So the groups that we have recommended are Parks Board and the yet-to-be-formed Transportation Advisory Commission. I suggested a third might be Economic Vitality since there's been some interest in that commission's work as well. And we sent out an email to all boards and commissions members first reminding them, as we had done during budget deliberations, that this was a topic of conversation with the council and that we were moving in the direction of televising more boards and commissions. And then to seek their feedback on which boards and commissions they felt would be the best candidates. We received, I forgot to count, but I'm going to say there's about 20 maybe comments. You have a park copy in front of you. We've also emailed a copy out to council members, and there's some additional ones up here behind me for those in the audience. Arts Commission, Economic Vitality, Park, and Rivers and Streams were the boards that submitted some comments or individual members of those boards. And then we did receive one comment from a member of the public who's not currently serving, but who saw it in the packet. A mixed bag of comments. I think there's little nervousness about change and about how televising meetings might affect the current rhythm and protocols on those groups. But as you all know, from recently moving to televising either being new members or we've moved our council committees to television, there are obstacles that can be overcome. So be happy to answer any questions about the comments. I think a couple trends that I saw here is some people asked whether it was more important to televise a kind of regulatory group or a full commission as opposed to an advisory board. We already televised those regulatory commissions. So at this point, we are looking at boards and commissions that are more advisory in nature. And then, as I said, other comments just are about room location and just perceptions about how valuable the meeting content is to the general public. In particular, Rivers and Streams members noted, as I did in my memo, that they meet so infrequently. They didn't feel it was a great return on investment to televise their board. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the city administrator? Council Member Hunt?
Thanks. Where is the Transportation Advisory Board in their process of bringing on new members?
Sure. So we are currently recruiting for that board. As you know, we've extended the deadline for recruiting. We are capturing the names of interested people. Right now, we're not likely to even perform interviews until we're ready to seat members of that board. So what's unique about this group is that it is a brand-new board and that we had told council that we would not be prepared to staff it and support it until we filled the senior transportation position. And we have attempted to do that twice. We're going back out now for a third time. We're also investigating a second option, an alternative to waiting until we have that position filled. That may mean bringing on some contractual services to get started. We want to have a staffing resource in place of some kind before we start the board because they will have their own body of work to accomplish. And in particular, we're anticipating the Mobility Master Plan will be the first thing on their plate. And that's a significant project, which will need quite a bit of staff support. So I don't have a updated timeline on when we will be able to get that board up and running. At best, it's looking like the end of this year.
And also, could you give me, and maybe this is a question for the Parks Board leader, but could you give me an idea of what the Parks turnover looks like in terms of how many new people are coming on? Just because I'm wondering if the new people can be advised that they will be televised if we choose to go forward with that.
Sure. Jeff can do both of those pieces. He can tell you kind of number. And then he just informed me, he's been updating people as we go along.
Absolutely, Emily. Thank you. Yeah, so we've been having interviews this week. We have five openings. All current applicants have applied, or current board members have applied. We also have, are interviewing quite a few other residents that are applying. So don't know what turnover may or may not be, but they're all aware. And even as part of the interview, we've had some very engaging, positive conversation about this transition and where we're likely going with televising Park Board meetings. And I'd say there's very overwhelmingly been a receptivity, maybe some what's this mean, what's this look like, but a lot of receptivity to that.
Okay.
Councilmember Baptiste?
So I have a... I have a specific question just about the Parks Board because the two recommendations are the Parks Board and the Transportation Advisory Commission that hasn't started yet. So would the Parks Board be allowed to, within this structure, to move there same time within the Pickering Room? I just know from serving on commissions in the past that sometimes people are very focused on what their typical schedule is on the commissions, so any kind of big change can mean that you might lose members.
Right. I think of all the boards we have taken a preliminary look at, the Parks Board is perhaps the only one that would not have to change their regular meeting date. Location would change, but regular meeting date and time, it looks like, would not need to change.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yes? Just a couple of quick questions for me. So you mentioned that if we had conflicts with broadcasting, we would make a determination of who would broadcast live?
So I think there are a couple of choices there. That's one. We could either make a choice, which would not be my recommendation because it would be fairly ambiguous about who's being televised what night, or harder to communicate what the protocol is for that. Alternatively, we could just move that board or commission's regular meeting night to another night where we don't have a board televised or a different time in the evening so that we could do live streaming of both and have the video available post-meeting.
Can you just summarize the comments that you got back from the boards?
Sure.
Real high level.
Well, high level, I'd say, I'd say the majority opinion is a little anxious about being televised. I would say that there's also a common thread throughout of look at some other board before mine or look at those more regulatory, regular meeting commissions as opposed to advisory. And then there certainly is a strong, more minority opinion of this is a good idea and more easily ready to accept that it might be their board that's picked.
And just to clarify, so the direction from the administration and council leadership is that we get to decide tonight?
Yes.
All right. Pretty exciting day indeed. So if that's the case, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak about this, about which boards we should be televising? Even?
David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. I think part of it is it establishes a record that you can go back, and that's as important. If you're at home watching it live, you know, it doesn't matter if it's live or happened the day before unless you're going to run down here and try and catch comment time or something. But it establishes a record, which is really important. Parks is really, Parks is a chunk of the budget that's maybe more flexible than the police operations or how much goes to fire and things like that. So there's a lot of public interest in Parks and it's, you know, it's right below public safety. It's next, and I think our citizens' priority. So getting that out there, and it doesn't hurt when you're on TV like we are now. And you get used to it, and I think they won't, I don't think they'll be bothered. I can remember when the councils started doing that, and it was a little shock at first for us.
Thank you, David. You? Anyone else like to speak about televising, broadcasting additional boards and commission meetings?
Good evening. My name is Fab. I don't know many of you, but nice to meet you tonight. I came to actually listen to the Visit Issaquah, but I'm happy that I'm hearing about broadcasting. Coming from a journalism background, I think the transparency and allowing people to see what's happening in their community and then maybe come down here and sit and hear more and participate would be a really good thing. So especially with Parks, it has a wide appeal to probably all of us and all the families in our community. And so I think it would be a really great thing to show that to everyone on TV so they can watch it from anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment? Right. Councilmember Baptiste?
I did think of one more question. So just in terms of, we have a recommendation for two commissions from the administration, but could go all the way up to four. Is that correct?
Potentially. Again, it will depend on logistics, so.
Okay.
Potentially, and I'd say you don't have to close the book on this conversation. We could pick two, get started. We could come back and look at the calendar after we add those two and say, okay, we have a couple more slots we could possibly accommodate in the budget available to do that. And then you could have another discussion about who are the next two or which is the next one.
Okay.
Any comments? Councilmember Hunt?
I am in favor of broadcasting more meetings. I am, I think that our commissions are all very important. And so I wasn't sure which ones were potentially the ones to prioritize in terms of broadcasting. But I do think that these two are good choices. They're not the only choices that I think make sense, but I think they're good choices because the Transportation Board is coming online. And so those members will know ahead of time what they're getting into. And also, they won't have to, they won't have to change their schedule, same in terms of the schedule with the Parks Board. And I think that the Parks Board does important work. I know when I was on the Planning Policy Commission, we were often thinking about what the Parks Board was doing. And it would have been, I think, really helpful sometimes to be able to go back and look at those meetings. I also think that in general, broadcasting allows for increased participation in the process of civic engagement. And if you have another commitment, this allows you to see what the commissions are doing and what city government is doing. And these are issues that affect all of the people living in Issaquah. So I'm strongly in favor of broadcasting more meetings, and I think that these are good choices.
Councilmember Baptiste?
So I would echo what Councilmember Hunt talked about. I'm a big advocate of going forward and broadcasting these meetings. I sat on Economic Vitality Commission and the Human Services Commission for three years. I do know that it is a little nerve-wracking when you first go forward and have those broadcast. I know we had one Economic Vitality Commission meeting where that was broadcast, and it was here. And it was a very different feeling, but I think that over time you get used to that. I could actually see broadcasting up to four. I've always been a big advocate of also letting the commissions see what work that other commissions are doing and the overlap that can happen between those. And sometimes the commissions end up in a little bit of a silo, so this allows some of that cross-communication. But I also think start where we can because we've got a new room and different schedules and that kind of thing. So I would be, I would be open to start with the two that are recommended from the administration. I think the Park Board has very broad appeal throughout. It affects bonds. And I just think it would be really important to broadcast that and the Transportation Advisory Commission. Just, that's one of the biggest topics that we have in the city. It's newly, it's going to be newly formed, so from a logistical perspective, that would work in with the schedule well. And down the road, I'll just throw out the Economic Vitality Commission. I think that it has really interesting topics that I think across the city people would be excited to hear about. And just, I'll have some other thoughts on other commissions as we go forward. But I think I would recommend starting with two, and then, like you said, we could build that out over time.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Councilmember Baptiste made me remember one other thing, which was that when I was on Planning Policy Commission, some of our really productive meetings were joint meetings of multiple commissions. And I think that that is beneficial to the commissions because they get to see what other commissions are doing. But also, I think it's beneficial, when I read some of these concerns about broadcasting, I think maybe it would be a way for commissioners to get a feel for being broadcast, that you get used to it and the community is watching, but they're watching because they're interested in what you're doing on the commission. And so I would encourage more of that sort of meeting because it would give the commissions a little bit of experience with broadcasting. And also, I just think it's a very productive way to have meetings.
Thank you. So just, I feel like I shouldn't say anything because you guys have done such an excellent job of summarizing it. The one thing that Mr. Kapler said, which I thought was really important that we haven't talked about, is it does also create an enduring record of what happened during the meeting, and I think that's really important. And the point that you brought up, both of you, around sharing information between commissions, that gives a lot of flexibility for people to go and look at that. I also believe that two is a good place to start. It may not be the right place to end. But let's go get a win with the two, and then if we find that there's need for more and capacity for more, let's add more later. But I think we should go ahead with the Parks Board and the Transportation Advisory Board today. So I'm going to move that we recommend to the administration to start to televise Parks, the Parks Board and the Transportation Advisory Board as soon as the facilities are ready to support it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carrie's, there you go.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up is Parks Director Jeff Whitling. Going to give us an update on our, we're going to talk about Agenda Bill 7484 Teen Cafe Partnership and Leasing Agreement.
All right. Thank you very much. Very excited to bring back this opportunity as an action item for discussion tonight. Throughout, really, a lot of the last six months of last year, this idea of a teen cafe was brought before council. Tonight is really, I think, the culmination of this partnership and really an opportunity to springboard into something really, really exciting. There's been a lot of work we've done this first quarter to look at and work through the details of this partnership, to work through identifying a location, and also looking at the program. So with me is Executive Director of the Teen Cafe, Kaylee Jake. Given the uniqueness of this partnership, we're going to kind of tag-team this effort. We're going to talk through background. We're going to talk about the site selection process that we went through. We'll talk about the program model itself and really what the intent of this opportunity is and the audience it's looking to serve. And then I'll touch on the lease agreement itself. So with that, I'm going to let Kaylee share early background.
Well, I am thrilled. I am always thrilled when I get to come and tell you the work that we've been doing and the progress we're making. And I just want to start by saying that I was, when I was driving down to come tonight, I was thinking that I had my first meeting with Barb D. Michelle, and I think I've shared this story with all of you, but it was three years ago this month when we both agreed that this was going to happen. So anyway, got a little teary, so I'm going to keep it together for tonight. So as you know, and I'll just hit our highlights of the last three years, but we started the committee, the planning committee, in 2015 in September. We've always had students on our committee, and it's been incredibly important that they are the loudest voice at the table. We've also surveyed teens because we started with just a few of them, but we wanted to hear from more and know really, if we were serving the Issaquah School District, high school students, what did they want? Did they even want this? So this was something that we did a few times in that first year of our planning to really hear from them. And we also researched other successful teen centers. And we, I think I've shared with you all that we found a real amazing model in the firehouse that's in Redmond. So we've really based a lot of what we're doing on their work, and they've been around for 20 years. So together, as a committee with our students, we developed a mission and vision statement, and I'll share that again with you in a little bit. We have had just the most fortunate partnership in the city of Issaquah from the get-go. I just, everybody on staff, on council, both mayors now that I've had the pleasure of working with have just been unbelievably supportive, so I'm so grateful for that. And you'll remember that in October, we finally officially created a partnership with Friends of Youth. So we are not a nonprofit, but under their umbrella, we are, and we function as one. And then we've had our Teens for Teens Committee. And I like to point out that Paul Winterstein actually named that committee at one of our meetings, so that's pretty exciting. And so this is made up of 12 high school students from all four high schools in our district. And they are the driving force of our planning and our name. I don't know if you noticed the logo, but we are officially The Garage, and they created the logo for us. I'll put it back up on the screen in a minute. And then although we are not a nonprofit, I do, it was really important to me that we had a group of people that could function like a board and help me. So we do have what we call an advisory council. And so right now, we're up to seven members, and I'll show you that list in just a minute, so. Oh, I am still going. Okay, I'm sorry. So as you can see, here's our advisory council. So, and I'm not sure if, I know there's a few familiar names up there. But I'll just point out that Jerry Blackburn is a counselor and program manager at Friends of Youth. And Rebecca Rice is a social worker and a case manager at the food bank. So we've got some great, some great expertise on our board to really help us navigate the policies and procedures that I'll get into in a minute as we're creating this model. And then that's the list of our amazing teens that are helping us make this happen.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Or Kaylee?
Sure.
Would you rewind to the meeting so we can see that cool logo one time and linger on it?
Look at that.
Right.
How cool is that?
Comes later as well.
It does come later.
Okay. Thank you.
But yeah, pretty exciting.
Cool logo. Creative. So as Kaylee touched on, some of the history and background, how we began to become connected as a city. Just some reminders, and as we started delving into site selection, June of last year, the Teen Cafe Group provided a letter of interest to the city. And that really kicked off some initial work with staff in exploring this and exploring opportunities. That led in September 2017 to city council providing approval and direction for us to pursue a partnership and really begin to explore a little more in earnest some potential city space and city facilities that might fit into this partnership. It was identified pretty early on in that process. An area in proximity to the community center seemed to be a preferred location given its location to the high schools, its access to transportation, Rainier Trail, and all the other public amenities around there. We conducted two public meetings in the fall, one in October and one in a follow-up in December after hearing the feedback in October from the community. In all, there were four locations identified as potential locations, and those were discussed and presented at the December meeting. Sorry, I went the wrong direction. This matrix is what we shared that evening. I won't go diving into all the details, but it was really an opportunity to share with the community and get feedback as both city staff through a couple different lenses, both programmatic facility and even looking at land use and permitting, and also having the Teen Cafe Group looking at these four options. It became pretty evident that option three on this list, what we called the 235 Building, really began to stick out as meeting, most meeting, these as, as meeting, most meeting, these five criteria that we identified. And really began to become really evident that consensus was really around this 235 Building as the, as the preferred location. That building has been, over the decades, been used by the Parks and Recreation Department for a variety of purposes. Most recently, it houses some of our recreation storage, as well as some, some city staff. If you recall, through the budget process last year, we and the department were going through some current, or some realignment of staff, and how and where we position our staff, moving our recreation staff into the community center, all into the community center for some efficiencies there. Those realignments really led to and opened up the opportunity for a portion of that space, the 235 Building, to be available for this. As we looked at and began to work with the Development Services Department, the land use, site analysis, and, and the permitting process that's begun to be explored, all confirm that this really appears to be a really good location for the site.
My turn?
You bet.
And, and before we take a peek at this, I just want to say that Jeff has been amazing. After our first open house, it was clear that while the space, we were very grateful for the offer of the first initial space and looking at all four of them, to bring this building to us is just, it's remarkable. So I can't, and it's just a pleasure to work with him. So, so here's our mission and vision. And I want to just take a minute to, because you're going to be deciding on the lease, I think it's important for you to have a, a pretty good idea of what we're going to be doing, what's going on, how it's going to be structured. So I just wanted to start with kind of what grounds us in the work that we're doing. So it needed to be a safe drop-in place, no, we were trying to take away every barrier that we could. So in the survey that we sent out to the students across the district, they were all in consensus whether they were at Liberty Issaquah or Skyline that downtown Issaquah was a good place because they, it's kind of a midway. So, so a drop-in place, no cost to get in, and no obligation once you're there. And that, that they get to decide what happens in that building. And so they are really owning the space and having a voice in that space. Okay. So when we look at the operating plan that we're starting to put together, or that we've been working on for a while, our hours of operation will be after school. So we'll be open Tuesday through Saturday to start, and we'll be open from 3:00 to 8:00, Tuesday through Thursday, and then 3:00 to 10:00 if we have a concert or an open mic or some kind of evening event on Friday. Saturdays will probably be open 11:00 until either 8:00 if we don't have any evening event, or later if we do. And I'm anticipating that with a stage there that, you know, that will be used frequently. But we will adhere to all the noise ordinances and all that kind of, those, those structures. So we're also thinking a lot about our policies and procedures, how we create an environment that's safe and positive and inclusive for our teens. And they are really doing a lot of the work with us in thinking through these policies. We have been working with Officer Ryan Smith, who's the Community Outreach Officer, and a great guy. And so we had, he came to our meeting so we could talk down, talk about, excuse me, lockdown procedures. So if, for instance, were, we have students in the building, and let's say Clark is in lockdown. So those, so we're trying to think through those things. How do we get on that structure? How do we, what is the training that we'll need for our staff to ensure that they understand whether or not a student is sober when they walk in? Because that's imperative, right? There's no, and that there's no harassment, and there's no bullying, and there, and so these are the things that we're talking about and the policies and procedures that we're implementing so that when we hire this first cohort of staff, that they'll be trained and ready to go. And so I'll skip to staffing. So the way the organization is set up, I'm the director, we'll have a part-time, and I'm full-time, we'll have a part-time business manager that would help kind of in the facility, helping with, helping manage the space, basically. And then we have, right now, we're calling them youth leaders, and it's really confusing. So we have to come up with a better name. So if you have an idea, I'm taking suggestions. But these will be young folks in their 20s, working with the youth. And I'm imagining that we'll have four of them on staff to start. As I said earlier, programming, this is all created by our Teens for Teens Committee. So the idea is that, that they, and they've already started letting me know what they want and what they don't want. They're not interested in yoga classes that I suggested. But they're very interested in arts. We have a partnership with Art East, so we're talking about getting that in. They're really interested in tutoring, and we have a partnership with Pacific Learning Academy in Spamish. But I think they just want a place to go and be with their friends, and find their community, and find that connection. So we're keeping it pretty flexible. And, and I'm actually super excited to see what they're going to think of and what they need. On top of that, I did want to mention that we do, we did receive funding for a drop-in counselor. So that'll be a Friends of Youth counselor that will be onsite. And so we're, we're excited. That's one of the tenants that we've always carried, is that we have that resource onsite for them. And then our funding strategy, I know I've been telling the council and, and this committee as well, that, that it was going to be okay, and that we could do this. And it is, and it's been going very well. So I just want to, if you have any concerns. So we've raised the capital that we'll need for the renovations. And we have raised in pledges, half of our operating costs for the first three years. So we still have work to do, but what that does is it allows us to spend more time thinking about the program of it, and not with such a shoestring staff running after the funding. So it gives us a little breathing room, which I think will be enough that we'll need. Yeah. So do you have any questions about that part? Not yet. Okay.
So the last of the four items we're going to touch on, an overview of the lease agreement itself. As Kaylee mentioned, and as we put together the lease, we, the lease, as you see it, is with Friends of Youth. Friends of Youth is the entity that's serving as the fiscal sponsor for, for Teen Cafe. I note that certainly if and when Teen Cafe was to become a 501(c)(3), there's assignment language that would give the city the ability to assign that lease to a newly-formed 501(c)(3). But for the time being, this is with Friends of Youth. The program itself, the, the lease defines the premises as the southern two-thirds of the 235 Building. Utility expenses will be shared proportionately, two-thirds, one-third in this arrangement. All the renovations, all the tenant improvements are the responsibility of the tenant. And as Kaylee mentioned, their capital campaign has already gotten those funds. In terms of how this value to the city is being achieved, given the significant public value, the community benefit, really the niche for serving high school students, how that's being achieved by this nonprofit group, we're seeing that value being met in that in lieu of rent. We have some other lease agreements and partnerships with, with other nonprofits throughout our city facilities, and some of our city facilities that do the same. If, as if you can already tell, this really is a partnership, collaboration, coordination between this entity and recreation staff and the pool staff, given its proximity, is really essential, and is going to be critical as this moves forward. There is a performance expectation in the lease agreement in that not only the annual reporting is a requirement, but as well, we have a hours of operation minimum that will be needed to be achieved. But we don't anticipate those being hurdles by any, by any means. So this is a quick overview of what those tenant improvements would look like in that, in that southern two-thirds. It's going to be a well-activated space for, for certain. And I'll flash up the last piece because it has that catchy logo on it, and open it up for any questioners or questions or discussion you might have.
Councilmember Hunt.
I have a question about the two-thirds usage of the space. Mostly, it seems that because there's going to be concerts and noise, I'm just wondering what your, what the city is planning to do with that, that other third, and also how it's structured in terms of, is there an architectural division in the building? And how is it going to work with the city, the city retaining one-third?
Great question. So how we intend using that space is, it'll, it'll serve two purposes. Recreation storage, so it'll store our, our seasonal recreation equipment that we're pulling out and putting back in. And as well, on the far, so that will serve as the buffer. Architecturally, we'll have a pretty solid sound wall. And then we're going to create a community meeting room space on the far side of the building that will be available for, for meetings.
And what was it, what was it for, used for previously?
So previously, as I said, it was storage space, and some of our recreation staff, about half of our recreation staff were out of that building. We also had one of our park planning staff and our open space steward, Matt Meckler, who is now supervisor of park operations. So he's over at the facility shops. Our park planning staff will be transitioning to, now that we have two staff, are transitioning to a new space. The recreation staff are going to the community center.
Mr. Member Batiste.
Thank you. So, so I see that there, there was a state, State Department of Commerce funds for $100,000 that were received. And so does that get you all the way through tenant improvements?
Not quite. Yeah. So we've also received a grant from Issaquah Quanis, and we have a grant pending with Spamish Rotary. And I think that will get us to where we need to be, which is about $125,000.
And then beyond, June 30th, 2018, what's the plan for the future, just in terms of raising money for operating expenses, that kind of thing?
Sure. So we expect our, well, I've been working with Friends of Youth right now to create our fiscal year '19 budget. And that looks like it's going to land around $360,000. And we've raised $155,000 in pledges each, for the next two years, well, for the next three years. It's kind of funny because it's this fiscal year that splits the calendar year in half. So, so again, I feel like that gives us an opportunity to, to have our annual appeal, to have, we're going to do, launch a GoFundMe type of social media fundraising campaign in the next couple of weeks. But, you know, we have this great opportunity of a captive audience with high school parents in our community, and we can reach them through the district and through their peach jar, which is their, the way they communicate with parents. So I feel really confident that that, the fundraising won't be a problem. It hasn't been so far. We have, we still have corporate asks that we're working on, but, and foundation asks. Those relationships take a little bit more time, and the individual donors in this community have been incredibly generous. So, yeah.
Do you have one more question? Jeff, I've got a question for you. So in terms of the lease, you talked a bit about performance. We, we, in the city's past, have had leases with, with nonprofits where the city was providing the space. So I'm wondering what, what we've implemented from a best practice perspective, from what we've learned in the past, and how that would enter into this lease?
Yeah, great question. So I'm familiar with some recent history with that in terms of the senior center. Yeah, the, a couple things in terms of best practices. One is certainly holding true to that annual report and that performance expectation. Secondly, I think is critical is consistency of relationship. Why I said in that bullet, in terms of that collaboration and coordination between what we're doing programmatically and what they're doing programmatically, not in an oversight way, but in a assuring that, that public value that we're wanting to achieve is, is continuing to be achieved. If there are concerns, those are being addressed on a much more frequent, consistent level, as opposed to letting them linger over multiple years. That seemed to be perhaps what wasn't so healthy in some of the, the more recent lease agreements that the city has had.
So do you feel like the, this lease agreement really, really takes care of some of the potential issues that we've had in the past? And I'm also wondering if an annual check-in is frequent enough?
Great question. Yes. In terms of, like, whenever we write a lease agreement, there's some language in here, I hope doesn't have to be enacted in terms of clawback or needing to terminate. But there is certainly language in here that would give the city the ability to do that as the owner of the space. I think as we look at reporting, I think annual reporting feels like a, a proper frequency from a formal reporting standpoint. That should in no way, shape, or form be our only communication or understanding or talking through program schedule, coordinating what's happening with events there and at the community center, and our concerts on the green, and so many of the other programming elements that are happening throughout that space. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
And if I could, I'd just add that we've had Parks and Rec at the table from the very beginning. So an incredibly important partner when we think about how we're serving the community and our students. And so it's very important to us to be, well, to be good partners, for one. I mean, we want to be an asset to the community. And so as we learn about everything that's going to happen there, it'll be incredibly important for, for us to have check-ins. Jeff and I have already discussed, you know, what meetings can I start attending that they have on a regular basis so that I can hear what's happening and we can collaborate more, more clearly. Brian Bernstein's always been at the table. He's, and the deputy, thank you, director of Parks and Rec. And, you know, one thing that we always talk about is this pipeline that we have in our community. And the community center does such a beautiful job of serving families and younger students. And then they hit high school, and they kind of don't want to hang out with younger kids anymore. And so we look at this as just a pipeline. So this relationship is incredibly important to us. And I think we're going to learn a lot as we go and correct all the time. So it'll be really important that we're in constant kind of, plus we'll be across the street from each other. So there's that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? I just have a couple of questions for you both. And I think I understand this, but I'm, I'm going to do this for people who are watching us on TV or in the audience. So Teen Cafe is not a So Teen Cafe is not a not-for-profit.
Correct.
The lease is with Friends of Youth. Can you just describe the relationship between Friends of Youth and Teen Cafe today?
Sure.
And then what you think that evolves into over time?
You bet. So the fiscal sponsorship that we receive from Friends of Youth allows us to raise money under their nonprofit status. It also, they're helping us with insurance, so our insurance will go through them. That's what they provide, that's it. And we pay them for that. 10% of our expenses goes to them for that sponsorship. The commitment that they made was three years. I asked for at least three years. So we started in October. I knew it would take about a year till then to kind of be up and running, and then I wanted at least two years under my belt to kind of see how this was going. One of the reasons that I didn't want to become a 501(c)(3) out of the gate was that this is a new model for our community. It's really important to me, coming from a nonprofit background, that the community wants to support this, and that there is the need that we think there is. We could find, I don't think this is going to happen, but, you know, we could find that they aren't showing up, and then we'll have to rethink that, right? And if I was my own nonprofit, that could be a harder thing to go through. So they give us a bit of a buffer, which is great. So at the end of three years, our contract ends, and so I am working to kind of beef up my advisory council so that we're starting to think about this in the next year as we go through the growth and the learning of operating. And then I'm 90% sure that we'll end up becoming our own nonprofit. We could, the Redmond Firehouse is actually a program of Parks and Rec, so that could happen, I don't know, but we could talk about that. And then the other option would be for us to merge with another nonprofit. I don't think there's anybody in the community right now that would be a particularly good fit, but that's, those are the three options, and we'd be making that decision in our next fiscal year. Yeah.
From a governance perspective, does the Friends of Youth board have any oversight obligations, responsibilities to you, given this?
They do. Yeah, they do. And so I meet with Terry, who's my boss. Terry Potmeyer is the executive director or president and CEO of Friends of Youth. So we meet monthly, and then, yes, and then I come to their board meetings infrequently, but, yeah.
And then my last question really deals with liabilities and liability insurance, and what is the city's liability since it's our building if the unthinkable should happen?
Yeah, so we've asked the tenant to carry liability insurance, a pretty hefty amount should the unthinkable happen.
Absolutely.
Ultimately, as the owner of that building, if there are latencies with the building, we have that responsibility, but we have that responsibility currently with the use of the building. But pretty strong amount of liability assurance and indemnification from a programmatic standpoint, given that we do not have a programmatic role.
Right.
Teen Cafe has programmatic responsibility.
And that's one of the benefits of being under the umbrella with Friends of Youth. They have such incredible insurance, just with the work that they do with at-risk youth, that us coming under their umbrella was a good fit, so.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hunt.
How many people actually would be able to fit into the building at a given time?
I think that we land around 75 or so. I think that's where our occupancy, but I'm imagining, we're budgeting for 20. I think that that's a realistic number. And I also wanted to add, because I don't think we mentioned, but one of the things that we talk about is because we can't have a huge number, we can't have hundreds of kids in that space. So one of the ways that we'll partner is then to bring a bigger concert venue or something of that nature to the community center. We wouldn't have it there. So the close proximity is, really makes a lot of sense, so, yeah.
Just one more question for, to bring it loose. Have we done any talking to the community in the area of this building to let them know that this is underway and kind of take their temperature?
Yeah, so again, as part of that site selection process and identifying, that was a neighborhood outreach effort, and it was pretty clear consensus from that group that this space made the most sense and very supportive programmatically.
Very supportive, yeah. The first time we had an open house, I walked, literally walked around the neighborhood and handed out flyers to invite them to the open house and had a lot of conversations. So we've had incredible support of the idea, and when we had our open house with this site and talking through the site selection of the four potential sites and landing on 235, it was a very warm reception, a very quick meeting. There wasn't a lot of conversation.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. So I'll open up for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience today that would like to talk to the lease agreement for Teen Cafe, AKA The Garage? Dave Kapler.
The first meeting, which was at the house at Second and Bush, was a disaster, I think. Total opposition from the neighbors. The new location, I think, is 100% support of it. It is a way, you know, compared to Concerts on the Green, this is going to be very quiet no matter what they're doing in there. So it's a great location. I remember when, I don't know if it was Friends of Youth or whatever, it started in the 1960s in Bellevue, and I was just starting in college, and we were counselors, in quotes, and dealing with all these drunk kids and kids strung up on LSD and all of this, and things have got a lot more advanced. And this group has really got it together, and I think they're really going to have a good program, and it'll be full support from the neighbors and all, so. And the park department's been great, except we did lose our, we're losing our meeting spot at the Trail House, but you're going to come up with a new one. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else? All right. Comments, thoughts? Councilmember Batiste.
Well, now that I've gotten a chance to ask some of the tough questions about lease agreements and best practices, and we've talked about insurance and indemnification and all of that kind of stuff, I just want to say how supportive I am of this particular idea, and it really seems like it's come together in such an amazing way. And it's a really, a good example of everyone reaching out and doing community engagement. This was a really exciting idea when it first came before Safety and Services. A lot of support, but the location had some questions, and more community engagement was had, and a new location was found, and as that process evolved, has evolved, that just seeing that community engagement and watching the process develop has been great. This is just something that I know my friends and I have talked about for many years. I've got two teenagers, they're not teenagers anymore, they're in college, but just having a place for teenage-age kids to go and something cool to do is amazing. And the partnership that's developed and having Friends of Youth involved, the parks department, all of that is really, and all the thought that's been put into the lease agreement, the program and policies that the group is working with and making sure that it's not only fun, but there are also resources available to the teens, I think is all critically important, and I'm very supportive of this.
Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you for the presentation. I, not to, so I think that the logo and the name is really cool. I did want to just point out that there is another business in Issaquah that's called The Garage, so just to keep it The Garage, the Teen Cafe, to keep that clear. I like the logo and I like the name. You asked about the youth leaders needing, so I would be, I would think that they might want to have something like coordinator or program coordinator, program director, just because then they can put it on their resume and it can be, it won't have the word "youth" in it, and it'll be just a job, leadership-type job, or counselor, whatever the sort of role you see them in. I think that you've clearly given this a lot of thought in terms of the fundraising, how it's going to work, what, all the contingencies in terms of checking sobriety at the door and with the occupancy. I actually was asking about occupancy because I was imagining that with Concerts on the Green or some sort of big event, you might get a ton of people, but it sounds like you've thought of what to do in that case and what to do for larger events and overflow, so I think there has been a lot of thought that has gone into this, and that's really great to see. Like Councilmember Batiste, I think that having resources available to teens, this is an important need in our community, and I'm really excited to see this go forward. Overall, I'm in support, and I think it's great that the city is able to partner to help make this happen with the lease.
Awesome. I'm tired of going last because I have nothing more marvelous to say. So I'm really excited about this. Kaylee and I talked right before I joined the council, and I'm really excited to see this come to fruition, and we're taking the next step, and it's a really great program for the teens here in Issaquah and in the general area, so I am very supportive of this. So with that, I'm going to move that we recommend to the council that they authorize mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Friends of Youth for the purpose of providing the Teen Cafe program with a portion of city-owned building at 235 First Avenue. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Just a question of process for, we're anticipating this going back to council on the 16th. Would you, with the unanimous vote, would you like it to be under new business?
I'm cool with consent.
Consent?
You okay with consent? You know what?
I would love to just give this some light. I think that this is so important.
Much quicker overview, but we can highlight.
We can do, we can make it brief, but I would like the council to be able to talk about it, and I would like to just highlight what this partnership is and what's going forward for me.
All right. Regular business.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, next up, Agenda Bill 7522, creating the Visit Issaquah organization. Keith Uret today, huh?
Short straw, the only one left in town, apparently. So I'm going to kind of toggle between the memo and the presentation, so sorry for that, but I couldn't figure out how to make it flow very well, so we're going to do the best we can. So I'm going to start and just give some context, and primarily, I think that the meat of the conversation will at least start with the questions that the committee asked. If you remember, this agenda bill was at services last month that the committee asked, and we suggested going back to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to have a conversation about those questions. And so tonight, I'm going to kind of go back and revisit those questions with, I think, answers that were supported by, I'm going to call them LTAC hopefully from here on out, so I don't have to say Lodging Tax Advisory Committee another 20 times. So kind of just some context. In 2014, the city and the Chamber of Commerce partnered to hire Roger Brooks International to look at tourism in the city, and as part of that report was a recommendation, it was number two, to create a Visit Issaquah organization. And this is really kind of that recommendation coming forward in terms of an implementation action. So what the administration's recommendation is with this agenda bill is to authorize the preparation of the Articles of Incorporation and to create the destination marketing organization as a 501(c)(3). There's already a budget action that has been taken for 2018, and so right now, what we're looking for the council to do is authorize the staff time and the legal, the city attorney would work on those Articles of Incorporation, and that's really what we're looking for from this agenda bill. So LTAC is proposing an annual budget of $150,000 for salary and operations of the DMO. In 2018, an additional $30,000 is requested for startup fees, including marketing and promotion, for a total of $180,000. And oddly, what got adopted in the budget is $172,000, and I'm not sure where that $8,000 disappeared to, but there is a disconnect there of a small amount. So from the last committee meeting, there were a number of questions that were raised, and I want to go through those questions and what the responses that was provided. We can either just go through your questions and comments each individually, or we can go through this whole thing and do it after the fact. I think it's your choice. So one of the questions that was asked was, how will the DMO interface with the city council and the community? And as we talk through that, there's a number of ways this could happen. The first response is how would the city council have a touch point or an interface with the DMO? And the DMO, what we talked about was providing a kind of a biannual report to the city council, and that could either be, I could see that happening as part of a COW meeting, committee of the whole meeting, a work session, or even it could be at services. I think the council could decide what the format is that they would be expecting. And primarily, I think, you know, what I would see happening in those meetings would be an opportunity to go through the things that the DMO was focused on. So, you know, we talked about performance measures, and we'll get down to that in the next item, but, you know, really talking about what is the DMO focused on, you know, what's next on their agenda, what are they marketing for? Those kind of conversations, I think, would be part of that touch point. You know, as we talked about, how would it interface with the community? You know, I think what we heard last time, and there was agreement at LTAC, is the DMO, if it's going to be successful, it has to represent our community. It is representing Issaquah because it is selling people to come here. And so you have to have, you have to understand what our community is about to really be able to authentically do that. And so, you know, the expectation is the DMO will have connections with the Chamber of Commerce, downtown Issaquah, Economic Development Department, Economic Vitality Commission, Communications Department, City Parks Department, Village Theater, History Museum, Cougar Mountain Zoo, State Park and DNR, King County Parks, Issaquah School District, Issaquah Highlands Community Association, Issaquah Alps Trails Club, Issaquah Some Amish Reporter, Issaquah businesses. And that one's super important in that, you know, really what the DMO is marketing for is not just the hotels, and we'll get into that conversation a little bit later, but also for our local businesses. You know, it is the restaurants and the other city organizations that benefit from those tourism tax dollars. So that's, you know, that's, I think, how we would respond to the first question. A second question is, will there be performance measures for the DMO? And the answer is yes. The executive director will work with his or her board to develop the measures for success. Measures will be used to evaluate the performance of the DMO to justify continued funding from LTAC. So part of this, because right now it's being set up as being funded by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee primarily, there will need to be performance measures for success for them to get continued funding. Its existence depends on its succeeding. So the expectation here is that the performance measures will be developed in the fourth quarter of this year to guide next year's activities. And the reason why I put it in that frame is I'm just thinking about, okay, assuming the council gives us authorization with this agenda bill, you know, the next step is to put the selection panel for the board together, to choose the board, to have the board advertise for the position, to get the person on board, is really, you know, my guess is September, and I'm just... And I'm just picking a month in the future. But, you know, the way I could, I could rephrase the answer to number two is, you know, really as soon as the ED is, is hired, I think having those performance measures within 90 days after them getting on board is a reasonable expectation for us to have. So how will the board be selected? This was a question last time that Tim didn't have an answer to. And as we talked about it at the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee meeting on the 30th, we kind of came to the conclusion that there needs to be an odd number of people, so you don't have a tie. So five was a good number. So the first two, Will Parkinson and Kwan Pham, both of them sit on LTAC and both of them represent hoteliers. So that, that made a lot of sense for us. Having a representative on the selection panel from the chamber, one from DIA, and then someone appointed by the mayor. So that rounded out our five. I think, I think the committee felt really strongly that that would be, that would provide that, you know, nine-member board, kind of a good representation. So last question was, and there's actually a question that is not on this memo that I think was asked, and I'll get to it later relating to budget. Will the DMO represent the community and not solely the hotels? So the purpose of the DMO is to represent the specific destination while helping the long-term economic development of the community through travel and tourism strategies. Travel and tourism improves the quality of life for the local community by creating jobs, bringing in tax dollars, and attracting and promoting events that cater to locals and tourists. As represented in 2014, Issaquah Tourism Organization Plan by Roger Brooks, he states, "The Visit Issaquah organization would work collaboratively with the Economic Development Department of the city, the Economic Vitality Commission, the city's communications office, the Issaquah Chamber, Salmon Days, and other festival organizations." And that's from page seven of that report. So the hoteliers have shared a belief that as a community hosts more events and activities, even if they are oriented to local attendees, those events and activities benefit the existing visitors of the hotels by giving them additional special things to experience. Their expectation is the DMO will not focus solely on events and activities having a regional draw. So in other words, if they've got people staying at their hotels and there's, you know, let's say, you know, there's a festival at the state park, that gives their visitors an opportunity to go do something that makes their stay more pleasurable, which would maybe translate into them coming back to that hotel in the future. So following the approval by the council, what staff would do would be to work with the city attorney to create the Articles of Incorporation and the bylaws for the DMO. The city will initiate the board recruitment process by convening the selection panel that was mentioned in the memorandum. And following formation of the board, the executive director position will be recruited by the board. I'm going to go through, this was a proposal, so right now, for those of you who don't know what AVP is, it's the Association of Volleyball Professionals. And we have now hosted a summer event for the last three years. And so one of the things that happened last year was, there was a kickoff party that was hosted by Hilton Garden Inn. And, you know, it was, as, as things grow, they usually get a little bit more sophisticated. And so this year, Toquita Bethune came in with the proposal to put together a, basically a host event for this year. And that proposal includes an opening night reception, a Taste of Issaquah where local restaurants could have food that could be purchased, kids volleyball clinic, and then, you know, maybe a family movie night. And we talked about it's still sunny in June at 10 o'clock at night. But the point for sharing this is, there is this proposal and is this proposal a good proposal or not? And my answer is I don't know. Because we don't have an organization to really evaluate that on, on behalf of the city. And LTAC does not have staff to spend time really looking through this and maybe soliciting other proposals. Right now, we have one proposal and it's the group that did it last year. And, you know, that starts to just feel like, okay, we're just kind of, you know, giving business to the same organization year after year. And so one of the reasons why I'm sharing this is, this is the value of the DMO. The DMO would do the work to decide whether this was the right proposal or whether there was maybe other proposals out there that might actually represent the city better than this. Last comment, it was brought up previously, budget. Do we have enough money to actually get this thing off the ground? So one of the questions that was asked was, you know, what does an executive director of a DMO get? And so just spending a bit of time today, you know, salaries kind of all over the place, you know, ranging from Helena Tourism Alliance at $50,000 to Visit YOLO at 85. You know, what I would say is, and then, you know, why I provided the information on the right, you know, nonprofits are, you know, they have different levels of expertise in executive directors of nonprofits, anywhere from, you know, this median is 70, but they go up to 150. You know, my expectation is, you know, I would suggest that we probably advertise, that this position's advertised as negotiable. But my guess is it wants to land anywhere between 95 and $120,000. And then just doing that based on kind of my knowledge of competitive salaries. So, but that's not me for, to decide, that's ultimately for the board to decide. But I think if that, if that is a reasonable guess, the amount of money that the, that the city has set aside, given the fact that we're hiring somebody for a partial year, and, you know, that I believe that there will be plenty of funds available to actually get this off the ground and move it. So with that, I'm going to stop talking and look to you for questions. And I think there might be some people here that might want to talk to.
Councilmember Hunt, you're going for it.
I had a question about, it's potentially about the missing, or the, the gap $8,000, but is it pro, is the rate for salary going to be prorated because we don't expect the director to be, to come on until later? And is that also maybe why there's 8,000 different from the 100?
I, I'm going to guess there was some sort of accounting clerical error in the budget is why there's an $8,000 difference. But to the point where we're hiring somebody for a partial year, because what's going to happen is, once we get to budget this October, November, there will be another request for an appropriation in 2019. Because the idea here is, you need to get somebody started, they need to develop a business plan, and then they need at least a year to get that business plan off the ground. So we're, you know, we're really dealing with a business startup here. And so the conversation that happened at LTAC and Councilmember Winterstein talked about a two-year runway. I actually think it's a little bit less than that just because of, we're getting a slow start this year to getting this off the ground. But you basically get them hired and the formation of the articles done in 2018. And then they have basically all of 2019 to show us what they can do by the time they get to the fourth quarter of 2019, asking for money for 2020, there'll be real measures of success, I think, at that point.
So Keith, first of all, thank you for getting some specific information and bringing that back after meeting with LTAC. And I appreciate this. And it gives me a better, a better idea of how things would look. There is one question that I didn't see answered, and that was the, the more regional strategy, was that discussed? I just didn't see that here.
So, so it, so sorry, yeah, it was discussed a bit. So, so the city, the city was part of a regional TPA before, it was called Outside Seattle. And it, it got, it went a little sideways. And I think the, the belief that we have is starting this organization, representing Issaquah and getting them kind of their building blocks set before we start thinking about maybe regional opportunities, working with North Bend and Snoqualmie and others, makes more sense because we'll have the basic framework of a local organization before it branches out into a more regional perspective. And so I think it's, it's kind of, I think there's a, there, it feels like it has a better opportunity for success than if we started as a cooperation with other cities trying to do something that, that serves more of a regional perspective.
And with the board being selected, are there certain timeframes that go along with that? How, how long are the appointments? Has that been, was that talked about?
Yes, it was. So right now, and I'm doing this from memory, I believe that they talked about a two-year commitment for a board member. Those, because you have people in industry, they tend to be shorter commitments than, than maybe what we're used to. But having those be at a minimum of a two-year commitment is what I remember.
Okay. And just one last question. So you had highlighted, as you ran through all of the different groups in Seattle, you highlighted the businesses and spoke specifically about restaurants. Was there a thought about putting someone who represented restaurants or is that more through, do you feel like DIA covers that? I just, I'm asking what the conversation swirled around.
Yeah, no, that's a great point, or a great question. I don't, I mean, so you have, you have restaurants, you have local kind of art and music entities that could also benefit from this organization dramatically. And so I think the idea was with DIA, you, you would hopefully, I assume, get a downtown business. With the chamber, you would hopefully get someone from somewhere else in the city. And then the mayor's appointee could be someone that maybe represents, somebody who's not being represented already. So that could be the last, you know, the last person on the selection panel that, that might represent some, somebody completely different that we might think, well, this needs to have a voice at the table. So.
Thank you.
Just one question for you, Keith. So I, when we last met, one of my biggest concerns was around governance and how, how the board would be selected. So I'm not sure five is the right number, but it's fine. Where does this get memorialized? I mean, it's in a memo now. Where does this get?
So we would put it, so we would put it in the agenda bill update. So that this memo would get incorporated into the agenda bill update, which then is, I think, the basis for you guys giving us direction to move forward. So that would be clear direction. If, if you supported kind of what has been presented this evening, that would then be the direction for the administration to incorporate into the bylaws, you know, and, and the process as, as we move forward. I mean, I think right now, what, what we are saying here is that we will initiate the board recruitment process. So, so we would talk to DIA, we would talk to the chamber, and we would get that selection panel together. And then we would develop a timeline for when we would advertise those board positions. And then when that process would hopefully conclude. So, so it's, this is, this is the commitment that you're getting from the administration is that this is how we would move forward with creating the selection panel. The board, the board pieces would be in the bylaws. So for example, if there's nine board members, it's most likely that those board members would have certain representations in terms of maybe, maybe there's a restaurateur on it, maybe there's two hoteliers. So there would have to be a decision about how to composite that, if it's a nine-member board, that nine-member board.
And, and so in addition to being the body responsible for selecting the board, this would also be the group establishing what the initial set of, of bylaws for the not-for-profit would be.
No. So, so right now, the city, so staff and the city attorney are putting, are putting those together. Now, what we've been doing has been talking with people that have experience in these kind of organizations. So for example, we received a draft copy of bylaws from another DMO that included a opportunity for membership in the DMO. That's a great idea. I'm not sure that we would start there as, as a membership organization because that has, there's pros and cons and that's, but that's a, it could evolve into something like that. So, so the initial bylaws are going to set this thing in motion. There will be a methodology for the board to amend the bylaws. So as it grows, and maybe if it decides to participate in either a membership organization or in a TPA, it could change its bylaws to account for that, if that's the way it wants to grow. Really, all we are doing is getting it off the ground and setting it free. And then it's going to go do what it's going to go do. And it's, this is, part of the recommendation that came out of Roger Brooks was, his suggestion was, this is not a city-run entity and this is not a chamber-run entity. This really needs to run in between those two. And so for us, what we're really trying to do is just get it rolling so it can go be something, but then to let it turn into whatever it wants to be. So we're trying to put, I think, as small a fingerprint on it as we can because that was the, the recommendation that we got.
I'm kind of struggling, and I, I'm not really 100% sure why I'm struggling. But we have this five-person panel, which is representative, they're going to be the ones establishing the board. I feel like they should have some sort of role in establishing the initial set of bylaws too. Because I think in any organization, whatever you put in place first, it lingers and it establishes what you're going to be in the long run. So yes, we can say that the board can change the bylaws, but the reality of it is, that initial push, which we're going to be doing right now with establishing the, the Articles of Configuration, or Formation, are going to do that initial push. And I'm not at all questioning the capabilities of the staff, but I'm just wondering if we might benefit from having a broader perspective on establishing those first set of bylaws. And we are creating a committee here that could be leveraged.
So I, I fully support your, your intuition on that. I think, I, and I didn't mean to describe this in a way that city staff are going to go in a back room somewhere, draft these things up and, and it's going to be done. Right now, it's a very porous conversation with the chamber and DIA and LTAC in terms of getting this thing off the ground. I would expect, Councilmember, that those bylaws will have multiple public and community touches before they're brought forward for incorporation. So if, if it didn't sound like that, that's my apologies. I expect it to be a very kind of open process to actually draft those, those bylaws. And as I said, we've already received suggestions from the chamber.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hunt.
This is supported by the Lodging Tax. And the Lodging Tax has a variable amount of money that comes in each year. And so I'm wondering in the long term, what happens if it's a dip or if it's, or hopefully it, it rises over time because there's more money coming in through that tax. And so what are the plans for dealing with those fluctuations?
So, great question. So right now, our Lodging Tax has been on the upswing as our hotel rooms have been generally full and fairly expensive. Right now, we're taking in over $200,000 annually in LTAC revenue. So if there is no other funding, I think where we are, if the expected salary and operating costs are somewhere around 150 to 175, we should still have money left over in LTAC to do some other things, which is the hope. to do some other things, which is the hope. That's the expectation that LTAC has. There is also a, a belief that at some point, the DMO will also get funding from others. So whether, you know, if, let's just take, for example, the Taste of Issaquah. You know, it may very well be that the DMO says, hey, there's this huge volleyball tournament at the state park, and we can highlight four restaurants, and maybe they pay to, for that marketing opportunity, right? So there's, there's different ways that revenue can come into the DMO. Right now, I think, I think it's sustainable for at least the short term. And like I said, I think it will grow and look to grow its, its economic base as it kind of gets its feet underneath itself.
You, you mentioned if there was excess money to do other things. Could you elaborate a little bit or explain that?
Yeah. So, so LTAC has talked about some other things that they are supportive of. One of the things that they offered money up for in 2016, and we didn't get accomplished, was a branding and wayfinding program for the city. And so, and part of that is just, at city staffing, we had resource shortages that didn't allow us to get to where we wanted to get to. So, it's not, they have not made an appropriation for branding in 2018, but they have verbalized their desire to support that if the city was ready to move forward with a branding campaign. So that's just one example of support. The AVP, the thing I showed you earlier, that hosting event, that is not part of this $172,000 for the DMO. So there will be a separate agenda bill that comes forward, once Tim gets back from vacation, that asks for a certain amount to fund that AVP hosting event. So those type of things, I think LTAC has identified are things that they support.
Councilmember Patrice? Anything else? All right. Well, let's, let's take some public comment. I think there's a lot of people who'd like to speak to this here tonight. So, anyone who would like to speak to the committee? What? Up here? Sort of informal, but your name, please, would be great.
Good evening. I'm Fred Neistrom, 391 Southeast Sycamore Creek Lane in Issaquah. A number of years ago, when I was with Sunset Magazine, I was the tourism development specialist for the magazine. So I got to travel around a lot in the western states and Canadian provinces, consulting on how to help people, states, and provinces and communities build tourism. One of the things I noticed even more so after I left Sunset and started to do travel guidebooks, was the supreme difference between a well-run Chamber of Commerce and a DMO. And when I would go into a community looking to do an editorial on places to stay, or places to eat, or things to do, if I went to the Chamber, my experience was very different. I would get information about paid Chamber members. But we could have wonderful places all around that community that would have made a wonderful editorial, but I wouldn't hear about them. Now, I'm not faulting the Chamber, because that's, their job is to represent their paid members. But with communities that had a focused head person to talk to about tourism and tourism development and bringing people into the community, you get a much broader sense, and you answer the writers' questions in a way that traditionally leads to very good editorials. And good editorials lead to people coming into those communities. So, to me, this is a no-brainer. This is something we've needed in this community for a long time. I'm glad to see it's gotten to this point. And I certainly, as a, as an old road warrior and writer, would highly appreciate being able to have our community represented more professionally than we've been able to do in the past. Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. Anyone else like to speak? Come on up.
I'm Mark Chirico. We have the Seattle Paragliding School down the road there. And we've been developing Tiger Mountain with a flying that kind of advertises itself, with the gliders all over top. And it's really been a grassroots go from the, the start. It's gone well. Feel like we've done it with the support of DNR and King County, and they've come on really quite strong with infrastructure down there, with the mess we had with all the, the parking and so forth. We're ready for next step. I came down here because Paul Winterstein stopped by on his bicycle and said that we should. And, and I invited my neighbor, Simon Ross, here, who's spoken for about the last year and a half. We've eyeballed an international cultural center he'd like to get going. And my 22-year associate, Michael Miller, in the corner there, who, raise your hand, Michael, who runs the Tiger Shuttle there, has inspired me for a long time. We've kind of been a, this has risen up kind of on our own. Fred, I think we did an article some years ago with you. I was surprised to see, and Christina, you were in our circle 15 or 20 years ago. Surprised to see just how small and singular this is. So I came down to find out what was going on. And Issaquah's been good to us. There's wind in our sails, but I sense that there's a new chapter that's about to come. I came to find out what was going on and see your faces, and I'm kind of impressed with the way you keep this moving along. And so, that's it. We're down there, down the road, and I guess we're, we're ready to play, if you want to support us.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else?
I'm Michael Miller. I operate the Tiger Mountain Shuttle. I've been in business for 22 years. You're Mark. So we work together. Our businesses depend on each other. There's about 200 or 300 people that paraglide regularly at Tiger Mountain. And they're from all over the region, from Belladave to Vancouver. And they're on the islands, and they all come in gravity around Tiger Mountain. And plus, there's a lot of hikers. There's more hikers than there are paragliders. If you've ever been to Tiger Mountain, you'll see on a Saturday afternoon in the summer, you can't even get a parking spot. There's about 200 or 300 paragliders that come into the region, and they spend a lot of money here. They buy gas, they go out and eat, they go to the local water hole or whatever, they buy clothes. Plus, a lot of my vendors are in Issaquah, buy gas, and buy tires, and buy mechanic here in Issaquah. There's a lot of money from the tax base. There's my people coming in to the region. There's a lot of people. I would suggest that you probably should approve the budget for the DMO. And I would also suggest that you might consider, consider increasing the budget, because I think you'll bring even more revenue into the city. Instead, you got like $200,000 from the LTAC tax. I always try to say that, but, but you're not counting the money that comes in from all the other activities. I would suggest that it's close to $1 million or more from all the other people that come here. I would suggest that maybe you increase the budget, and the city would benefit from it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. All right. Anyone else? As much time as you want. I mean, don't, 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 don't be overly verbose, but.
As Mark mentioned, we are neighbors, and my name is Simon Ross. I'm new to this area. I live in Sammamish, and I own a property here, the Bigfield, where we store actually a large collection of unique cars, with no room to display it, other than a couple shows a year that we do. So, whoever is here might have some idea how we can make our city more attractive. That could be another venue to do so. And of course, the big plan is to work on the International Cultural Center, since we, our community is quite diverse, and there is not enough room. It's growing rapidly, and there is not enough room to, for the different venues. And the room is getting more expensive as well and limited. So, we want to kind of accommodate that as a long-term goal. Looking at this proposition, which we are discussing right now, I want to make, I'm in business, so it's, to me, it's just numbers. So, there are a few things that I've heard here. A, that hotels are running at the capacity and collecting maximum revenue, and the tax income from that, the lodging tax or whatever it is, is at around $200,000 a year. So 180 of that will be spent on marketing. And as a businessman, they were talking about, what, how do you evaluate the success? If you already have things running at the capacity, you're running at the capacity, the hiking trails, you're running hotels at the capacity, and restaurants are pretty full, streets are pretty full. So, you keep marketing, but how do you do the logistics? So that's my question. And I would kind of give it a thought. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Simon. All right. Anyone else scared to speak? Oh. Good. You feel right.
On Friday, I was at the REI store in, in Seattle with, I don't know, almost 40 people, talking about how we can get people to these trailheads in a different way than their single occupancy vehicle often is the case, or two or three people in their car, where we don't have places to park. This is the, of course, down the road at the landing sites, the, and you go Saturday morning, and that parking lot is full, and it's not people flying, because the air's not right. So, it's the hikers. And county is working, they're going to be starting right up again this year with the Trail, Trailhead Direct proposal. They're also working on connecting to a couple of places at Light Rail in Seattle for bringing people out here. You know, they're, they're not, we don't get money when they go hiking, but if they want to be here and like it, they can stay. They got the 554 to get them back to Seattle up till midnight or whatever. And we really need to be taking advantage of that. And the county's putting the money into it, and this is just one of those ways we can get more people coming here and not try and build parking lots for trailheads where, you know, where do you want to, a trailhead is popular because it's got water, steep slopes, wetlands, creeks, all the things that make it really hard or impossible to build parking lots. So, let's get people in these shuttle service that the county's working on. And we'll get them here, we can feed them here, we can, they'll buy stuff. REI's involved in this and excited about it. That's one of the, take advantage of our beautiful area here. It's pretty crazy, all green around the city, that people want to come here for. So, let's figure out how we can not jam our streets in our parking situation. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
I've had the pleasure of living in some other cities before being here, and one of them was an incredible town called Huntington Beach in Orange County, California. And much like Issaquah has water, a lot of outdoor activities, beautiful landscape, strong economy, and I think they were a phenomenal example of how to really create events and experiences that people will come to from all over the world. And I see no reason why we couldn't have something similar in our town. We have the most amazing assets with the lake and the, and the Alps, and all the hiking, and the parasailing, and the restaurants. And now the transportation systems are starting to design ways to get people here for us. And there's dollars on the table, there's experiences to be had. I also come from an event production background, so I've seen how an event can really change a city. A small town in the desert called Indio became home to Coachella. I saw that occur and what it became today. That doesn't need to be us, but we can still have, we can do more with the activities we have. We can do new activities, we can collaborate with the City of Seattle. I think we are perfectly situated for people who are interested in our region, who want to see the city but enjoy the landscape and the mountainside, and we can be their town. So I hope that we get something like this started sooner than later, and really take advantage of our identity and what we have to offer.
Thank you.
Wow, I'll sign up for that.
All right. Any, any other comments? All right. So, let's, we'll close the public comment then. Any thoughts, considerations? Councilmember Hunt? You're always first, always go to my right.
Well, first, I just wanted to say thank you so much for all of the public comments. We've had great community input on this topic, and I think it's super important, because the community buy-in for this concept will be super important. So, thank you. I am overall in favor of this. I, I do however, hear the concerns of my fellow councilmembers on a number of things that I think are still potentially unresolved. I'll be, I'll be interested to hear the other comments. One thing for me that's still a concern is that on the selection committee, I don't see actually somebody who's, at least to my knowledge, I don't know that we are representing that outdoor paragliding, hiking, Issaquah Alps, which I think is a really important part of our to-be-developed brand. But I think, you know, salmon days, that we have salmon-bearing streams, all of these outdoor amenities, I think that's really important to who we are as a city. And I am concerned that I, so there's also the mayor's appointee, that could be potentially the person that represents the outdoors. But in community comment tonight, and in community comment previously, and in my own experience, that outdoor component is so important, I would really, I'm, I'm concerned that we definitely need to bring that forward, that expertise. I, I think that this LTAC funding has limited, there's, there's limited things that we can do with it. And I think that this is a good concept overall. I'm overall supportive. I just have some lingering concerns, but I also really like the direction that this is going with more information. And I think that my concerns have been waning over time with seeing more and more information. And I think it has really exciting potential. I, I also would like to think a little bit more about the capacity questions, because you mentioned that the hotels are sort of at capacity. I think they're not at capacity all the time.
Not all the time.
Do you want to talk about that?
No. There's, I mean, so clearly, they have their on and off seasons, but, you know, they're, and the, the hotels, they function a little differently. Some of them have much more of a business focus.
Some of them have much more of a business focus, and some have much more of a leisure focus. And so, depending on which hotels you're talking with, they have different perspectives, which is one of the reasons why the selection panel has Hilton Garden Inn, which is much more business-based, because they have contracts with Costco. And the Marriott, Spring Hill Marriott on Maple is much more leisure-based, and that's families and people coming to visit this community. So, so, so I think it was purposely done that way to make sure we got kind of both sides of kind of the hoteliers and their perspectives.
Okay, thanks for that. So, just to wrap up my comments, I think that continuing the community buy-in will be important. I was glad to hear that the community input will also be incorporated into the bylaws, development of the bylaws. And I think, I think overall, this is exciting. I would just like to make sure that we continue the trend of community engagement, and also I would like to see the outdoor component represented.
Councilmember Batiste?
So Keith, thank you for all the work that you and Tim have, have put into getting some of these questions answered. I'll, I'll go back to the memo at the end, because I do have some suggestions about what I think would be helpful as this comes before council. But I want to echo what my fellow councilmember Hunt has talked about in terms of the, the makeup of the board. That was something that I was sitting and looking at, and I'm going to expand a bit on what you talked about. Number one, the, the outdoor component, or, or the uniqueness of, of what we have in Issaquah. What are those things that are unique? We have people who are representing paragliding here, or car shows. We've, we've got our amazing, what we do, the draw for all of the hikers, and different organizations that, that, that would represent those groups. And so, I would really like to see one of those, one of those positions added. It says that there's up to nine members, so I think that we could suggest to have another targeted representation on, on there. I, I also have questions about, you, you had pointed out, and I think that that was one of my comments about the memo, the, the very last thing that we talk about are the, the Issaquah businesses. And maybe, you know, we have two hoteliers, which makes sense, but maybe we would have one person from a hotel, one person that would be more of a business that, or a restaurant. Then we've got the outdoor component. And then my last thought is about just how we've talked about this being a marketing focus. Now, I would assume, and maybe that's not the right assumption, but that the, the board will be choosing the executive director. I would assume that the executive director would have marketing experience, but I, I can't say that for sure, because that board would be choosing that person. So that, it's just sort of a missing piece of it for me, is just that we, I, I get very excited when I look at this in terms of that being able to market all of Issaquah, and being able to represent more broadly all of Issaquah, because every, the hotels, the, the restaurants, the small businesses, the organizations that are in Issaquah that offer all of these cool things that, that in our city, everyone would, you know, that would be great for everybody. So building that out a little bit, I think, might be really helpful. I know we do have the appointee by the mayor, but maybe being more specific would be, would be helpful. And I did ask the question, and other councilmembers had asked, asked the question about the regional focus. It wasn't in the memo, I would put it in the memo, just so we have information about the fact that that was discussed at LTAC, and they had decided that that would be something they would look at down the road, or, or could potentially look at down the road.
Anything else? Great, thank you. When we first approached this subject, my biggest concern was all-around governance, and how are we going to make decisions? Who's going to be empowered? I, I don't know if five is the right number, but I think it's, it's a fine number. And I think the point that, that I was taking away that was really significant, is this group of five with the two hoteliers, the DIA, the chamber, and the mayor appointee, that is the group to select the board. And the board can be much broader. Now, one of the things that we might want to suggest is provide, putting in some, some placeholders and saying, one board member will be of this community, one board. But that's a bylaw question, not, not a question for right now. But I think as we start to develop the bylaws, we need to make sure that we do represent all of the different stakeholders in this community. And, you know, it might make sense to have someone from, from the city sit on the board too. But I, I think those are questions we can answer down the road, and we can refine over time. I think it's going to be very important that we leverage this group of five A to select the board, but also to be as an advisory board body to city staff as you start to put together the bylaws and make sure that we really do craft this thing in a way that is going to meet the needs of all of our stakeholders and will be sustainable over time. That being said, I'm really super excited, because I love living here, and I think this is an awesome place. And I can sit on my back porch in the summer, and I can watch the paragliders, and I think that's like super cool. So I'm, I'm happy to share this with larger community. I think we have, you know, an opportunity to do some really amazing stuff. So I'm, I'm very supportive of moving this forward.
So one, one thing I might suggest, councilmember, if you would like, it would be at your discretion, is I, I indicated that the development of the bylaws would be a very open process. I have no problem coming back here when we have a draft. If you guys want to have a conversation about what it looks like, and you could put, have some input in as much as, as DIA and the chamber and everybody else does, if you would like that, we can just add that to the process.
Let's bring it back. That'd be great, Keith.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Batiste?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I would really like to see that, because I, I think that some of these targeted, more targeted positions for the board, I think, would be very important.
Okay.
Any other comments? So, a move that we recommend to the council, to authorize the mayor to prepare and file the articles of incorporation to create Issaquah Destination Marketing Organization, Visit Issaquah, as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, through the approval of a resolution. Labor?
Hi.
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 All right, carries unanimously. All right. Okay, that's all we've got on the agenda today. Our next scheduled meeting is May 8th. We may be moving that meeting to another date, so, so stay tuned. We have some conflicts on the 8th that we're trying to schedule around. And with that, we're adjourned.